Welcome, everyone. Happy day after Election Day. We're going to get our meeting going now. Madam Clerk, may you read the adequate notice of compliance statement, please?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the Council Annual Meeting Notice dated December 18th, 2023, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
All right. At this time, I'd like to take a roll call.
Mr. Boyer?
Here.
Ms. Hamlet?
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Mr. Pulaski?
Here.
Mr. Smallwood?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Present.
President McDurnough?
Present as well. This moment, I'd like to ask our American Legion members to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you like to read the explanatory notes regarding closed session, please?
Yes. A closed-session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HGTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give her email copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, do I have a motion to approve the closed session and regular meeting notes of October 22nd, 2024?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on to our report section. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. This Sampson parking lot, which is adjacent to Lot and C Johnson Middle School, will be closed from 6:00 a.m. tomorrow, Thursday, November 7th, to 6:00 a.m. on Friday, November 8th, for restriping throughout the parking lot. Additional resident and employee permit parking is available in the Railroad Avenue lot behind the post office or the Broad Street Garage during this time. Summit Police Department will be hosting a community event tomorrow, Thursday, November 7th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Azucar, which is at 96 Park Avenue in Summit. Citizens are invited to stop by and chat with Spanish-speaking Summit Police officers, ask questions, or voice any concerns. Free coffee and delicious pastries will be provided to attendees. Next Monday, November 11th, is Veterans Day, and we will, at 9:30 a.m., we will host our inaugural Veterans Day ceremony. The event will be held at the War Monument on the Village Green. All members of the public are invited to attend. And then the Summit Y will be hosting a free breakfast for all attendees after the ceremony. Advanced registration for the breakfast is required. You can find that information on the city website and on the YMCA website. The City of Summit Fire Department will host a grand opening for the new firehouse located at 281 Broad Street on Sunday, November 24th, which is the Sunday before Thanksgiving, from 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Members of the public are invited to attend. The event will begin with a closing ceremony at the current fire headquarters at 396 Broad Street, followed by a parade to the new location for some firehouse opening traditions, and attendees will then be invited to tour the new building. More information for all of those activities is available on the city website. Lastly, I would like to congratulate the two newly elected councilwomen, Michelle Kalmanson for Ward 1 and Claire Toth for Ward 2. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, our interim city administrator, Mr. Tucci, would you like to make a report?
Yes, thank you. Just a couple of quick things. Just want to report that the search for city administrators is going well. We have 11 resumes to date. We get a couple every day, and I'm sure we're going to get a great candidate to sit in this seat to bring the city and move it forward. Secondly, I'd like to echo the mayor's sentiments. I want to congratulate the two councilperson-elect. Both of you, congratulations. And I want to thank the two unsuccessful candidates for their participation in the process. The process is the most important thing that this country has to offer. We all get to speak our voice. The voice has been heard, and the elections are over now. The hard part of the job begins. Let's govern. Thank you very much.
Thank you. For my report, I'm just going to add to that. I'd also like to thank or to congratulate Claire and Michelle for their wins in Ward 2 and Ward 1, respectively. I know they worked really, really hard. We saw them here almost every meeting. I also would like to thank Don and Mark. It's not easy running. It's easier when you win. It's tough when you lose, but we do appreciate it. This is, as I've mentioned many times before, this is effectively a volunteer job that you have to get elected for. It's not easy, and people really do put themselves out here. So again, I'd love, want to, I'm really looking forward to working with Claire and working with Michelle going forward. The other people I'd love to congratulate, we had, it was a big election. We have our congressman was reelected, Tom Kane, to represent District 7. We have a new senator, Andy Kim. It's a nice thing for New Jersey. He is the first Korean-American elected to Congress. So that's a real great accomplishment, and it's a really nice thing that shows New Jersey values diversity and promotes it. So that's really, we should all pat ourselves on the back for that. And then, and finally, I just would say, at the top of the ticket, some people were happy with how the election of President Trump went. Some people were not. That's democracy, too. It's great for the process, but now we need to turn the page and move forward. And I would say, you know, for those who are happy, that's great. Hopefully, you know, the country can move in the direction that people want. For those that it didn't work out for, the sun came up today. You know, I get it. You have concerns. That's fine. But I would say, let's wait and see and try and come together. The reality is, I've always said this, and when I talk to my students about elections and government, local government touches your life way, way more than federal government is. And in my humble opinion, and maybe I'm biased because of where I sit, I would change the ticket because who you elect locally matters more than who you elect at the presidential level, around affecting your life on a day-to-day basis. So I would flip it if I had my way, but I don't. And so when you talk about the top of the ticket, it's the presidency, and the council people are at the bottom. But it is certainly important, and then I think that's something to consider when we think about the results of the election. We have two new people representing Summit. They will affect your life a lot more than the person at the top. So if you're disappointed, you have that to fall back on and have some solace in that. But I'm really looking forward to turning the page and moving forward, and hopefully the passion, I'll use that word, may be redirected into doing what's best for Summit going forward, rather than talking about dividing us, talking about what brings us together, and that we can move forward together as a community. At least, that's my hope. And that is my report. We've got a proclamation today, don't we, Madam Mayor?
We do, sir. I'd like to call up Elizabeth McCarthy, who's the president and CEO of the Community Food Bank of New Jersey; Chuck Sausman, who is the community food bank, is a board of direct, on the Board of Directors, and is president of Peerless Beverage; Amy Sostowski, Director of Foundation and Government Grants; and Megan Vartan, who also happens to be Mrs. Vartan, Individual Giving and Women Fighting Hunger Manager. I think I remembered to turn it on. I usually don't. Okay. Whereas Kathleen DeChiara started the food bank in the back of her station wagon in 1975, in 1978 she began the emergency food program of the Archdiocese of Newark, and in 1980, the food bank. And whereas Kathleen DeChiara's lifetime of service began in the early 1970s, when she organized the Loaves and Fishes Food Collection at her church in Summit, New Jersey, in 1975, she founded the Community Food Bank of New Jersey, which propelled the organization towards its mission of ensuring that everyone in New Jersey always has enough to eat. Today, the Community Food Bank of New Jersey is the largest anti-hunger, anti-poverty organization that provides enough food for more than 90 million meals annually. And whereas Kathleen DeChiara's compassion and dedication to helping those in need knew no bounds and extended beyond her leadership of the Community Food Bank of New Jersey, her visionary approach focused on the holistic solutions to food insecurity and poverty. Kathleen DeChiara designed and implemented programs that have been replicated by food banks nationwide and helped start the National Diaper Bank Network, where she learned that food insecure families struggle to afford diapers as well. And whereas Kathleen DeChiara has received numerous awards, both local and national, including those from three presidents, three governors of New Jersey, and Pope John Paul II, among other prestigious awards and honors. She was a 2013 inductee of the New Jersey Hall of Fame and received eight honorary doctorates from colleges and universities in New York and New Jersey. And whereas Kathleen DeChiara was selected as the recipient of the John Van Hengel Fellow Award for her vision and leadership of one of the most innovative and productive food banks in the country. And whereas, the City of Summit wishes to honor Kathleen DeChiara's memory, recognizing her accomplishments, vision, and dedication to those in need. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Fagan, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim the day of November 6th, 2024, as Kathleen DeChiara Appreciation Day in the City of Summit, and ask all citizens to join me in expressing our profound appreciation to a remarkable individual and inspiration to many. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this sixth day of November in the year 2024. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. I was lucky enough to get to know Kathleen in my just-over-year at the food bank and really an incredible human being, but she would want me to say that she was not an incredible human being, because when people would call her a saint or say she was special, she thought it let other people off the hook. She said, "Normal people can make a difference," and that's what she did. She saw a need, and she filled it. And I think that's something that all of us can relate to and that all of us can do. She saw something wrong, and every time, she had trouble saying no to things. She always wanted to take on more, and I'm incredibly humbled to walk in her footsteps, and all of us from the food bank are just so proud of everything that she started right here. So thank you.
Okay. We've got a presentation for this evening. As Mayor Fagan mentioned, we've got Veterans Day coming up, and we are really honored to have representatives from the American Legion Lindsey Street Post here with us to talk about this sacred holiday. So please, Henry Baseman, Rick Wolf, and Bill Rapp, you come up and present your presentation, please.
Well, it's good to be here, and Veterans Day is a special holiday just to honor all those veterans, Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, Space Force, that serve our country and have served our country. And I appreciate the city and the YMCA partnering for this event on Monday on the Village Green. It's going to be at the site of the renovated memorials, which we worked very hard to renovate two years ago. I think we opened it or reopened it two years ago, December. I'm going to talk a little bit about that. I think everybody's been there. Everybody's been there to see the monuments. I think, just real quickly, the history of those monuments. I was walking around those monuments a couple of years ago with Henry, and the old World War II monument was falling apart, and I was moved when I, you know, picked a couple of names off of the monument and just Googled those names, and lo and behold, there are life stories of these young men that, or should say, their kids in their 20s that sacrificed and gave all for our country. And we, Henry and I said, "It would bill. Let's fundraise and see if we talk to the city, and let's see if we can't get these monuments restored." And it's kind of like a snowball, and we went down the hill and, working with the city, and we reached out to our Legion Post members and the members of our Elks Lodge. I know they're, I think everybody here on council is a member of our Elks Lodge. We solicited donations. We told the stories. I remember the first story we told was about the Spadone brothers. I saw two, the names, two Spadones. I thought they were cousins. Maybe they, but they're brothers, and they grew up on Woodland Avenue, and they both went to serve. One was a navigator in a B-24, was shot down in the Pacific Theater and died. I remember reading the after-action report by another crew that said, "We lost our best crew today." And so it touches you. It's 22, 23 years old, and then his brother was a field artillery officer that died the day before Germany surrendered in World War II. And, you know, they didn't come home. You want, you know, one of them's buried in Germany, the other ones, there's nothing left of them. The plane crashed, there's nothing left, bottom of some bay somewhere, Subic Bay somewhere in the Philippines. But we told those stories, and the money's poured in. And, you know, we started with a budget of $60,000. We hit that very quickly, and we kept expanding the monuments, and well, we can, we got enough money, we can do the back of the monuments. And then Mike McCarrenan was on our committee, and I got to thank Mike because he said, "Hey, the Summit Foundation," formerly known as the Summit Area Foundation, they were originally chartered to take care of the Village Green. And so Mike put a proposal together, and they were our largest donor. And all of a sudden, our budget was, we're over $100,000, and we can do a lot of things. And working with Aaron Schreger and Public Works, we got it demolished and, you know, the old monuments, and we got it done. So that's the story. We're very proud of it. I walked over there this evening, and I love the lighting, Aaron, that you guys put out. Everything's displayed, illuminated, and, of course, I'll probably bother you with some tweaks, trimming some shrubs and stuff, but anyway, I got your email address. But I appreciate all the hard work of the city, because it really was a joint project, working with the Legion, the Elks Lodge, and the city, and everybody, you know, pulled their weight, and we got it done. So, am I done, Henry? Okay. I always look to my boss. Bosses, okay.
I also wanted to thank the city council for that. Even though I live in Chatham Township, my body bleeds Summit blood. As a over-30-year resident of Summit, I attended all the Memorial Day parades and all the activities here in Summit for many times, so my heart is still in, is still here in Summit. This project is very near and dear to my heart, and when Rick said that it, the project blossomed, that is an understatement. It originally was, "Well, maybe we can refinish the plaques with the names." Well, if we take them off, the thing is going to fall apart. Well, maybe we can replace it and we can re-ingrave it. Well, maybe we can reconstruct it and put a different kind of stone on it. Well, if we do that, then maybe we could have some other way of putting the names on. Well, if we do that, then maybe we could put some, maybe some pictures on it. Well, if we do that, then maybe we can have some special kind of pictures. Well, if we do that, then maybe we can have some kind of special kind of facing so it looks more natural. Well, if we do that, then maybe we can do some more research. Well, if we do that, then what if we look at the other monuments and we can do something about that? Well, if we do that, then we have to make the whole area look a little bit better. Well, if we do that, then we better improve the Medal of Honor monument. Well, if we do that, then we better do something about the sidewalks. Well, if we do that, then we better do something about the benches. Well, you kind of got the drift of where I'm going, and that's how we went from $60,000 to do over $100,000, and it was well worth it. And Aaron, my hat's off to you, everything that they did, it was great, because when we started to dig the hole for the new flagpole, we ran into an electrical issue, and the hole filled with water, and we didn't want to electrocute crew, so we had to take a break and get that pumped up. So thank goodness for that. We're looking forward to the ceremony on Monday, and as a side note, I should mention, those of you who go in and out of City Hall, you may have noticed that the flag box is missing. Well, because that flag box is being taken down, was taken down and is being refurbished. It's been sitting, it was sitting there when it was black and red, white, and blue back in 2009, and it is now being painted and restored completely white. The new decals came today, and it's going to be reinstalled back there shortly, probably in the next week or two, and we're going to have a rededication ceremony, and it will be back there better than ever, and I've been working with Chief Evers, and it will be then the official deposit for used and unserviceable flags. And we will have more dedication ceremonies, rededication and retirement ceremonies for flags, which we will be then using the Boy Scout troop from St. Teresa's for service projects. So thank you all.
Thank you.
I always knew that Summit was a veteran-friendly town. Some other places I had lived were not so veteran-friendly. And as I was here, I learned about the rich tradition that Summit people have, serving in the military, and then coming home and serving the community as veterans. So I'm going to identify some of those people who, through the years, have contributed to our community and what they've done. It's not an inclusive list. It's representative, so if your name is not mentioned, please don't be offended. In terms of military service, there are 11 World War I names, 77 World War II names, 10 Korea War names, and 16 Vietnam War veins of men who didn't come home from Summit. In World War I, Allen Eggers and Thomas O'Shea were awarded the Medal of Honor, the highest award for valor that our country bestows. Tom O'Shea did not come home. Both of those men were members of the first platoon of the 107th Machine Gun Company, which was filled with so many people from Summit that it got the name "The Summit Gunners." William Earl Smith was a founder of our American Legion Post. He was a member of the 369th Infantry Regiment, known as the Harlem Hellfighters. He received two Croix de Guerre, one, the unit award, and the other, the personal award, which was given with distinction for his bravery. In World War II, Murray Ross became nine times president of Common Council, the longest sitting president of Common Council. Frank Lair was a council member, mayor, and Union County freeholder. Hugo Faltz was a state assemblyman and county manager. Miles McMahan was an advocate for seniors. Bob Max was the last living slave laborer, American soldier turned into a slave laborer for the Nazis, and was very active in charitable organizations. In the Vietnam era, three of us are from there. Brett Hare will founded the Other Fellows First Foundation. The Turkey Drive will be held again this year under their auspices, and there's a lot of other donations that Other Fellows First does quietly. Emil George was principal of the middle school. Bobby Butler was a very active member and a leader of our post and the county. Dave Baumgar's, Pat Hurley, and Mike Vernautico all served on Common Council, and William Bennett served as mayor. In the post-Vietnam and Global War on Terror era, there were a wide number of people, and I don't know them all, but David Morton, for whom you did a historical, who did, you did it, I'm sorry, Historical Minute; Rocco DiPiano, who's very active with the Elks and has raised a lot of money for veterans; Billy Gavia, Andy Smith, and Delia Hamlet, who are both veterans and both serve as Common Council members. Today, the military, the military sacrifice tradition continues. Gabby Holly, formerly known as Gabby Friedman, and David Naaman are on the way to getting commissions in the United States Navy. Todd Walsh, last summer, received a commission in, as an officer, in the United States Marine Corps. Matthew Sloan, who's Eileen Kennedy's, Eileen Kelly's husband, is in the Naval Reserve, and Mitchell Horn, who is now the commander of the American Legion Post, is also an officer in the Air National Guard. These are all people who served and built in the tradition of the people from Summit and served the community, state, and nation.
Thank you very much.
We do. Actually, we don't. He can send it to me tomorrow.
Yeah. Henry, just, can you send Rosemary a copy of your statement?
Sure, I'll give it to you. Just the list of the names.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Henry.
Thank you.
All right. There was a lot of history, and appropriately, that'll be a lead-up to our own Historical Minute. Councilman Pulaski, do we have one this week?
We do.
All right.
Anybody have this on their coffee table? Well, we have the author here tonight, Patty Miola.
Thank you for the plug.
You can get it at CVS, I believe.
Good evening, council and community members, Mayor Fagan, city staff, and special guests. I am Patricia Miola, president of the All Volunteers Summit Historical Society, and this is one of our trustees, Lori Dahl. We are the proud caretakers of the Carter House at 90 Butler Parkway, which dates to 1741 and is Summit's oldest surviving structure. From September to June, docents staff the house every Tuesday morning and Wednesday afternoon, and admission is free. We are always happy to arrange other, more convenient hours, too. Please visit and peruse our archives, which include material about homes, businesses, families, and so much more. In addition, we have on display Corporal O'Shea's Medal of Honor. We were part of Union County's recent Four Centuries Open House Weekend, an annual event, and we welcome visitors from throughout the region, which is wonderful, but we always have a special place in our hearts for people who are from our own city and visit. In particular, we'd like to invite the community to two upcoming special events. Thursday, November 14th, at 7:00 p.m., we're hosting a karaoke fundraiser at the Elks Lodge on Maple Street. Tickets are available on our website, and your $40 entry includes catered snacks from What a Dish and music provided by local resident Michael Fusco's Summit Sounds. It's an event that's a bit out of our wheelhouse, but we think it'll be a good time. Whether you just like to sing or you'd like to sit back and be entertained, please think about joining us. On Tuesday, November 19th, at the Carter House, we will unveil Summit's newest historic marker, graciously funded by the local Beacon Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution in honor of that group's 100-year anniversary. We've also received a DAR grant towards conservation of various items in our museum, which will include the reframing and conservation of a number of significant items. This multi-part project was years in the making. The marker is absolutely gorgeous, and we are so pleased and proud to have it placed on our front lawn. Come down at 10:00 a.m. for a short program, coffee and cookies, and a chance to celebrate Summit's history. In closing, I'd like to share a passage from author E. Robin Little's 1949 City History Book, in which he noted that "location does not make full-blown a good community." Mr. Little wrote, "Good citizens make good communities. As to why Summit has so many good citizens, the answer is that since its formative years, it has had to attract good citizens. It began as a community of homes, as a place favorable to home life. It therefore had a good start towards decency, shared responsibilities, and good government. Like attracted like and good citizenship became firmly rooted into the hard, black rock of these hills." Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I'm going to leave stacks of these on the table outside, so anybody that would like to take one or take a shot of our QR code, you'll have all of the information. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Patty could send me her presentation.
Patty, if you could just send a clerk your copy of your presentation, so we put it in the record. Thank you so much. Okay. All right, fantastic. All right, we're getting into the business section of our meeting, and we are starting off with an ordinance for hearing. Councilman Boyer.
Council President, may I read the?
Oh, yeah, please. I'm sorry. Skip the.
Ordinance number 24-3326, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 4, General Licensing, Section 4-9.6, Minimum Standards of Performance, subsection D, Minimum Storage Requirements.
Thank you. Now, Councilman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. If you recall, the proposed amendment will allow heavy-duty towing companies to have their storage facilities within one-mile radius of city limits. This change ensures that the city can use heavy-duty towing services in compliance with the ordinance, addressing the current service gap. It also provides greater flexibility for light-duty tow services, ensuring more consistent and efficient operations, especially if the scheduled tow provider is unavailable or ceases to operate. I move to open this ordinance for final hearing.
Second.
All right, I'm going to declare the ordinance for hearing open. Any comments from the public at this time? All right, hearing none?
We could open up to the council.
Any comments from council?
Aaron, just one question. If there is a tow service that wants to be a part of this in a city contract, what would the steps that that company would take to be considered? Do you know?
You, Council President, I think there's more purchasing or clerk's office?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just not aware.
Council Boyer, there's an application process that is submitted to the city clerk's office, and then the criteria is there and reviewed, and then if everything meets the requirements, then we issue the license or the permit.
Thank you. Rich, if you're watching, there's your answer, buddy.
All right, any other comments or questions from council? All right, I'm going to declare the hearing closed. Madam Clerk, will you please read the ordinance for final consideration?
Ordinance number 24-3326, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 4, General Licensing, Section 4-9.6, Minimum Standards of Performance, subsection D, Minimum Storage Requirements.
Thank you. We're going to do a roll call on this.
Actually, you give it to Councilman Boyer again?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Boyer. I'm all discombobulated today.
Make a motion to.
Thank you. Thank you once again, Council President. Having closed the hearing just a moment ago, I move this ordinance for a final adoption.
I second it.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President McTernan?
Aye. Motion carries. It's approved. Okay, we'll move along to our resolution section of our meeting. We're going to start off with finance. Finance number one, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11544, and this resolution authorizes the intra-budget transfer of appropriations from accounts with a surplus to those that are over. This is a regular occurrence in the last two months and the first three months of the fiscal year, and this particular set of transfers totals $138,670. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Comments from council? One thing I would just say, Tammy, this is where we have this period of time at the end of the year, and we may see some more of these. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just real quick for clarification, just to people watching. So, that period of time runs from December until January?
Through you, Council President. For the 2024 budget, you are statutorily allowed to make transfers in November and December, and then in January, February and March.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, great. All right, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Council President, this requires a roll call vote.
Okay, getting corrected all day today. Yes, roll call, please.
Thank you. Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Mr. Smallwood?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President McTernan?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, finance number two, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11558, and this resolution authorizes an agreement with the Wykots and Company for the city's 2025 audit services not to exceed $76,000. This, so Tammy, I'm going to also ask if it's okay to explain eventually. We have a new principal that is assigned to us, which gets another set of eyes, a new set of eyes, on our audits, so that's a very good thing. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Through you, Council President.
Please.
If Tammy could just tell us the benefit of having a new set of eyes on the audit this year.
Yes, through you, Council President. We've had the same partner in charge for, from 2019 through the 2023 audit. He retired in June, so they put a new principal in charge, so I'll be working with a new principal auditor. Some of the team that comes in will be some of the same folks, but this does give us away, we're not changing the firm, but we are changing the partner in charge, so it is a new set of eyes. So, there's actually two partners assigned to this, the principal owner and another partner, so I'm looking forward to working with them.
Thank you.
Other comments from council? I would just wrap up to say, we had a discussion about some of our professionals that we've hired, and I know there was a discussion the other meeting about talking about putting these things out for RFPs, and this is something that I think the admin committee next year will be looking to put a schedule together for some sort of systemic RFP, so it's during the year when it's not busy, I know Tammy, you're very busy right now, that will begin to look and try and put these things out every three, once a third every year, something like that, so that we can make sure we're getting the best service and the best professionals for Summit. All right, roll call, please.
It doesn't require it, but if you think it, I will.
Again, no, we'll do a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll get this down at some stage. Finance number three, Councilman Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is number 11585, and this resolution authorizes Summit's participation in the National Cooperative Purchasing Program through membership in the National Purchasing Partners Government. This is zero, this is a zero cost to be in this membership, and the city will gain access to pre-negotiated contracts for primarily fire and public safety equipment, saving us all money in the process. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Council President, I just want to know if, Chief Evers, do you want to talk about this at all? You don't have to. I'm just saying if there's anything to add about this purchasing benefits or, I mean, it costs the city nothing, but I don't know if you had anything to add though about it.
Yeah, most of the grants are, you don't have to put up any money from the city, but they're all granted with fire safety, public safety. There's the SAFER Grant and the AFG Grant on the federal level that come across. We always take advantage of it. Millennium does a great job in writing your grant, so you always try to apply for them. So, the great grant helps with offsets of our capital expenses, and we always take advantage of them, so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Just to expand on that, cooperative purchasing does not cost the city any dollars, but it does save the city dollars. It saves you going through the process of putting a bid together, because the cooperative has already done that, and it saves you time. So, the chief's comments are well-taken, that this doesn't cost you money, but it ends up saving you money, and that's the point I want to highlight. It saves the city money to do this.
Good comment. Okay, any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving along to capital projects and community services. Resolution number one, Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. I'm pinch-hitting here for Councilwoman Hamlet. Okay, this is resolution number 11579, which authorizes the installation of an ADA ramp at the Reeves Reed Arboretum. So, the arboretum is a treasure. This community has a public garden that is a wonderful place to visit, celebrating their 50th anniversary this year, and I will say you can now walk there with the new sidewalk along Hobart Avenue. Makes it a wonderful place to go and not have to spend any money to get in and spend some time among nature. What we are authorizing tonight is the culmination of several years of work to make the arboretum accessible to everyone in our community, which is the creation of what is going to be a beautiful ADA accessible ramp that will make the whole grounds accessible to folks. So, I am enthusiastically moving this resolution for adoption.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Public comment, please. No, any comments from council? Yes, please, Madam Mayor.
I just want to echo support for this. I was privileged to see the presentation of the schematics. It looks beautiful. It's going to enrich the experience at the arboretum and really make it accessible for everyone, and I'm really excited to see this come to fruition.
Thank you. Yeah, I would encourage people watching from home, if you can go, you can go on the city's website and look at the packet. They, the schematics are in there. It's going to be beautiful. I mean, it's a beautiful site already, but as Councilman Vartan, it'd be more accessible and even more beautiful, so echo that. Any other comments? All right, all in favor?
I'll make one.
Oh, yes. Councilman Pulowski, get in there.
Sorry. It's more of a story. Did you guys have to do a biology project when you were in high school? You go to the arboretum, you get a leaf from every tree, you put them together, yeah? Well, if they still do that, for any of you kids out there watching, if you decide to lay them out on your mom's dining room table, rubber cement goes right through paper, and it will ruin the finish. Be careful.
Words of wisdom. Thank you, Councilmen. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, capital projects, number two, Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution number 11571 to award a bid for 2025 and 2026 snow and ice removal services for the parking lots and decks to SNL contractors out of Kennelworth, New Jersey. I move to adopt this resolution.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
That's my job tonight, second.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from council?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted a quick question. There's obviously no minimum for this. This is just where, this is a maximum amount that we would, that we're approving?
Correct.
So, we don't have to hire them to give them a minimum per year. And I'm assuming since there's just, there's a couple in here that we have four-wheel-drive axle, single axle, which maybe Director Schreger's comment, but these will be able to get to our upper decks quicker than our own trucks that we have in town?
Yes, through you, Council President. So, in regards to the dollar value, if it doesn't snow, they will not get paid anything. I can't predict the weather. I don't think the weatherman actually can anymore, so I think we're due, but either way, if they, there is no minimum. It's a gamble they take to staff it for the work that we need, and hopefully we don't need a lot. This will be funded out of parking services. The equipment is, it's twofold. We don't have many pieces of equipment that can get up to the tier garage, the top lots, because it does have a low height clearance, so this will be able to, so they will, because we only have one or two pieces of equipment that can. And really, it's to supplement our staff, who in a true, real snow season, we wouldn't be able to get to the parking decks for, you know, a day or two after because of all the obligations we do have, so. Just looking back though, the last year, you know, 2021 snow year, it was $30,000 was the total that was paid, so.
So, when we do have a heavy snow, that we'll be able to bring them in to do our decks?
Right, the parking services, lots and decks, yes.
Okay. Especially since parking services are going to be paying for it.
Yeah.
Having one speeded up.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Capital projects, number three, Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution number 11570 to award a bid for the purchase and delivery of odor control chemicals from January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2026, in the amount not to exceed $89,040. So, city does have a sanitary sewer system, and from time to time, does have an odor. So, these chemicals are used to lessen that odor or ideally eliminate it, but they are expensive, so I move to adopt this resolution.
Thank you.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Capital projects, number four, Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is resolution number 11556, and it authorizes a two-year contract extension. This is for our current on-call professional landscape maintenance contract, which we are extending for the period of January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2026, for $195,580. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Capital projects, number five, Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. We're moving. This is ID number 11588. I see our former clerk, David Hughes, sitting over there. He used to call the transfer station "The Dumps," which, and I still does, I'm sure.
That he still frequents?
And he's there, I think, every Saturday morning, right? Exactly? So, it's called "The Transfer Station" because very little actually stays there. It is in fact transferred out of Summit, so in order to do that, the waste needs to be put into gigantic metal custom trailers, and the, one of the couple that we have is at the end of its life. We have been trying to purchase a new one for several years. The manufacturer is finally ready to get that done for us, and we'll finally take our $185,500 to do that, so I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? Yes, Councilman Pulowski?
It's "The Dump."
There's an S on the end. There's an S on the end.
I second that.
It's so much more, though. You can go get books there. There's lots of great stuff there.
Your transferring thing.
Exactly. One person to the other, yes. And we have our free market as well there. All right, any other, oh, Councilman Smallwood.
I mean, I have no idea if $185,000 is a lot or a little for something like this. Is this something that we can get, you know, off-market? Are we buying a brand-new one that's going to last for another 25 years? Is there a second market for this? Or a secondary market?
Yeah, through you, Council President. Where we're at a disadvantage is our trailers that we need are custom for the size and then for them to fit into our building, you know, specifically, so we are required to get, you know, we can't, that's why we had to go out to bid twice and eventually find someone willing to manufacture it. When we did go out to bid, no one even, we didn't have a bidder twice, so unfortunately due to our transfer station itself that we do have to get these customs, so I can just share it's double the price since 2007 when we bought the last one, which is kind of more indicative of, you know, the world we live in with the economy and the cost of aluminum. But in terms of secondary market, we'd have to find someone that has basically the exact transfer station as we do, and then has them in decent shape, because they get abused quite a bit with daily use and just being packed with literally garbage, so unfortunately not. We will attempt to auction it off. We've gotten some money in the past. Sometimes it's just... Sometimes it's just scrap, but we will get a couple thousand dollars for the, the old ones.
Okay. For at least the ones that we have, we can get some sort of scrap metal for it?
Yes.
Other comments? Councilman Miniger.
Through you, Council President. What part of the transfer station requires that to be custom? The door size, or is it a?
Yes, through you, Council President, but the, so most people, when they go up top, they're just throwing garbage down in. So, when you pull up, if you actually look to your left, you'll see where those trailers are backing into the Packer units. So, that's the part that needs to be custom, so it's fitting into our actual station, and then the Packer units themselves.
Okay. So, one more question. How do other cities do it? Would they don't, they can use these pre-manufactured trailers?
They could, well, first, very few municipalities have their own transfer stations, so, you know, if you go like Morris County, they just have a whole different setup where they just have literally probably 50 or 60 on their own, but they're specific for their station, but they just do much more, you know, mass processing of trash there, so. So, that, that's really what it is. Other ones are privatized, so, you know, if you're starting from scratch, you could build one that goes to a custom, not a custom, but to a standard-sized transfer trailer. But unfortunately, we're not doing that. But then, we're also in a situation, if we were to upgrade our facility to accept a more standard trailer by DEP rolls, we're going to probably have to upgrade the whole facility for millions of dollars, so we don't want to do that either. So, this is kind of the balancing act we have.
Thank you.
Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Capitol Projects, number six, we're pushing that, hopefully till next meeting. Capitol Projects, number seven, Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 11584, declaring a vacancy in the Department of Community Services and the Division of Public Works for a part-time custodian per our closed-session discussion. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Comments from the public? Comments from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Still moved. Second.
Oh, I should ask for comments before we do that?
Take the mo-
Yeah, take the motion. Thank you, thank you. Do I have any comments from the public on the consent agenda?
You need a second first.
Oh, I didn't.
Yeah, I don't know if you said it. Thank you.
Sorry. Any comments from the public on the consent agenda? No? Comments from council?
I may have.
Yes, please, Councilman Miniger.
Just because we've spoken about it a lot of times in finance, I was wondering if we could, so the opioid settlement grant, Mayor, you talked about some ideas that were, were pretty promising for use of those monies.
Yeah.
So, we've spoken, Tom and I, and actually, and Tammy have spoken about what are the options, and there are many. One of the places that I sort of see this could be very useful is in prevention, and Tom, there's no reason I can't sort of expound. I don't, I'm looking at you, because I don't-
Yes. It, you could use it for prevention. You can use it for homelessness if it has a component of prevention involved with it. It can also be used for programs. It could be used for training for police and fire and other municipal employees. So, there's a whole host. I have reached out to an attorney who, actually, he's the guy who settled all these opioid settlements. He's represented about 16 to 20 towns. He's going to be sending us a whole host of information on how we could proceed forward, and he's amenable to guiding us on how to spend this money in a prudent manner and yet efficient to get it spent and get the best bang for the city's buck.
Council President, can I add?
Yes, please.
So, I've been working kind of a separate track on the, in the backend, waiting to come together with the mayor on different parts, but I've been meeting with different organizations like Sage Elder Care. We have a contingent population out there that are elderly, and I know that they also coordinate care. In addition to that, HTTV can do some broadcasting about opioid awareness. So, I met with them and their board the other day. They were ecstatic about that. I mean, they have the broadcasting system and everything else. But the way I see it, and we'll talk, we'll talk more abundantly about it, is we want to get people off the street, right? And the way to do that, from my point of view, is you have to address their health needs, which is including mental health. Because if you find housing for a person that is struggling from mental addiction, they're not going to be in that housing for that long, right? So, we have to address the needs. I look at it as, as I was sitting down with Sage, I was looking at it as a triangle, right? So, off the street into coordinating care, mental addiction, while you're doing that, finding housing. But these are just ideas that we'll get together and, and talk about, so. There's a lot that, like you said, Tom, there's a lot that you can do with this, so I'm looking forward to it.
Good comments. Councilman Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. So, three thoughts for me about this. So, one is maybe a question. We have about $800,000, right, in this, in this account from the opioid? It's more than that? More, yeah. So, I mean, this is a serious, this is a serious amount of money. Number two is, one of our summer interns spent a ton of time putting together an in-depth presentation for us on how other municipalities were handling their opioid settlement funds. Sounds like there's a range of ways, some municipalities are just giving it over to the county. I don't think that's a good idea. I think we should definitely keep it within Summit, but one of those three, one of those ideas was my third point, which was, almost every city, almost every other municipality put together a group of people to evaluate the, essentially like a grant-award committee, right? And then, they evaluated requests that were coming in for how this money should be spent, and then they made recommendations to the governing body. So, it sounds like we have a lot of very good things going on, but I think we should try to centralize this so that we make sure, number one, we're, we're not duplicating efforts, but number two, that we don't wind up out of money, right, before we, we approach it with a comprehensive strategy. So, that would be my, my thought.
Council President, if I might just expand upon-
Yes, please.
Councilman Vartan's comments. The attorney I spoke to said, that is the first step in the process, creating a committee to offer recommendations to the governing body. But again, we're going to get this guidance in writing so that you'll be, all be able to see it.
Good. Thank you.
And just, I think the idea is that to, you have to know what's out there, and, you know, I've been meeting with professionals over at the hospital, doctors, and we want to get a fluidity of ideas, right? I think the mayor and I agree that we know what the problem is kind of in Summit, and bringing all of those different groups to the table. I see how it works with our homelessness task force, which is amazing. It is, it is amazing. And I like the idea of kind of doing the same thing, and we'll, we'll get to that point. This is not disjointed whatsoever, right? I think, once we bring the people to the table, I have a group of people, the mayor, I'm sure, has a group of people, and then we can, we can start. So, I think we have a good strategy.
Yeah, I would just add, this is a good problem to have. All right? I mean, fully the scourge of what's been going on in our country for decades now, and there's some, now some money to actually begin to try and do something about the poor people affected by this and prevent others from falling into this. So, this is a good problem to get to spend this money. I, I just want to thank Tammy for bringing this up, and, and we've had some really good discussions in finance, as Councilman Miniger has said, and I would just tell the public, this is, we are starting the process, and again, I'm excited to see what good things we can do with this. Okay. Other comments about the consent agenda from council? Okay, hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. Okay, that's it for our business section. City staff, thank you so much for all your help tonight. Thank you. We're going to now open up our meeting for public comments now. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on things not on the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes, if you could, please. And when you come up, please, again, state your name and your address.
Sure, thank you. Amy DeCibio, 1 Essex Road. I'm a registered Republican, and I was proud to support, support the former Together for Summit candidates that are now sitting on this dais and doing an incredible job running this city. You are doing it with dignity, and you are doing it with grace. While I'm disappointed that Don Nelson and Mark Gunderson didn't get over the finish line yesterday, as they are tremendous candidates and tremendous people, I'm sure the new council that were formed in January will be successful, as we have such strong Together for Summit leadership already in place. I'd like to congratulate Claire Toth and Michelle Kelmanson on their victories, and I am truly hopeful that they will be able to work cooperatively and put Summit not national politics and politicking first. As we all know, they will be joining a welcoming and capable crew: Council President Mike McTurnan, Delia Hamlet, Bob Palowski, Jamelle Boyer, Kevin Smallwood, along with Mayor Elizabeth Fagan. They have been steadfast in their commitment to this city. However, Councilman Vartan, I was hoping that as a sitting council member, that you would prioritize the oath you took to serve this community over your newer role as SMDC Party Chair. I was hopeful that when you took over as SMDC Party Chair, that things might change, and that perhaps the unfortunate tone and highly unfriendly rhetoric that's been set by your predecessors might finally be traded out for civility and tolerance, but I was wrong. Greg, you may be SMDC Party Chair, but what matters to me, and what should matter most to everyone in this community, is that you are an elected member of this common council. You are supposed to represent all of us. Your social media posts during this election suggesting that our fellow Summit resident and neighbor, Bob Huguen, is some kind of villain are unacceptable. Implying in social media posts that Bob Huguen, Don Nelson, Mark Gunderson, or any other Republican in this community is racist, misogynistic, or a terrorizer is repulsive, especially from a member of this council who represents the people, all of our Summit people. Bob Huguen is in fact the New Jersey GOP Chair, but he is also a Summit resident and as an elected official, you represent him too. Bob Huguen is our neighbor, and he is my friend. Bob and Kathy Huguen have lived in Summit for nearly 30 years. They are wonderful people who've raised their children here and who've done a lot of nice things for a lot of people in this community. Speaking of what Henry Bassman was going through, speaking about earlier, Bob is a U.S. veteran and has served this community as a Marine, excuse me, this country as a Marine, and so have their two sons. In fact, one is an active-duty member of the U.S. Marines as I speak. It's high time for you to take your responsibility as a, as a member of this Summit Council more seriously, Greg, and set a better example for those who will sit in your seat next. And for the love of Summit and the people who live here, if you continue on as your party chair, I hope you can learn to lead with civility and bring integrity and tolerance back to the SMDC leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy, could you leave a copy of your statement with the clerk? Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comments?
Hello, Ariel Williams. Do you need me to spell it? No? Okay. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak before the council this evening. Tisha and I are back to discuss the proposed traffic improvements on Balters Roll Place, Glen Side Ave., and Hughes Place. After receiving the letter from Mr. Schrager dated September 5th, for which we thank him, outlining said proposals for traffic improvement, Tisha and I proceeded to conduct our own survey, survey of our local government. The purpose of the survey was to ascertain reactions to the several ideas outlined by the city. We sent surveys to approximately 50 households within the area in question. Following this effort, Tisha and I are very pleased to share that we received 26 responses to our general question, asking whether or not the community is in favor of the proposed changes that the city suggested. The breakdown was as follows: 16 yeses, eight noes, and two undecided. One thing to point out is that not everyone who was in favor of changes being made to improve traffic, traffic safety thinks this can be achieved in the same way, and Tisha will share those responses shortly. Tisha and I would, would briefly like to share some of the comments from the survey that we feel are worth highlighting. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to be involved in a cause that is very important to us and our neighbors. Tisha and I will submit a copy of the survey, corresponding responses, and this note from which we read today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please.
Hi, I'm Tisha Bender at 66 Glen Side Avenue. I'd been here earlier with Ariel at the beginning of the summer to talk about two traffic accidents destroying part of my own property on the corner of Glen Side Avenue and Balters Roll Place. So, we sent out the survey, as Ariel had mentioned, and I want to just highlight some of the main comments that have arisen. In general, there is a consensus that traffic is unsafe in our neighborhood, and there were many comments to that effect, saying that they were surprised nobody had been hurt or even killed so far. I want to talk about some specific ones. One is actually from a person living on Hughes Place, and she says, "We're pleased to hear you're considering traffic calming and safety measures on Balters Roll Place. Our family uses Balters Roll Place every day for our walks to Jefferson Elementary School and for bike rides, strolls, and to friends' houses. Balters Roll Place is not designed appropriately and safely for its current usage. Regularly, traffic from Glen Side Avenue or Balters Roll Road speeds to and fro, dodging parked cars, and playing children. We see large trucks and other dangerous vehicles crowding the space. We take cover on the narrow edges of the street or in the grass fronting some of the properties." And a couple of comments from neighbors of mine, one of whom is here, two from the mayor, and I guess all of them went to. One had said, "I live on the corner of Glen Side and Balters Roll and seen the horrific accidents plaguing this intersection. Change is needed, and safety should be prioritized while making this community walkable and tied to the rest of Summit." And the other says, "As a homeowner on Balters Roll Place with small children, I'm very concerned by the frequent speeding on the street and the two accidents that resulted in damage to the stop sign and fence on our neighbor's property, which I saw happening. Luckily, no one was injured." And another comment, "This is a residential area, yet it's not treated as such. Balters Roll Place is a narrow side street between two county roads, but it's used as a cut-through between them even by 18-wheeler trucks. This is inappropriate and highly unsafe for pedestrians with young children and dogs especially." And as Ariel had said, although there's such a consensus on the safety of the area, there's not really a consensus on the remedies. One of the potential remedies was to make Balters Roll Place one-way, and there've been a lot of objections to that. One says, "I have some concerns about changing the traffic pattern because we use the street to go in both directions." Another says, "Can't imagine how much of the, out of the way I would need to just get to my house. One-way traffic on Balters Roll Place sounds like a possible nightmare." Another one says, "It could cause more harm than good and will cause more congestion, congestion on adjacent roads." And one says, "We'd like to avoid increased traffic through Hughes Place. We ask that you take special care to prevent the impacts."
Could you just, just finish up, please?
Oh, right, okay. So, and then quickly, another suggestion was speed bumps. Most people like it, but, and one person said, "It's, the road's like a racetrack, so it would be good, but speed bumps." One person was concerned it could diminish property values. Sidewalks, that's the last point, is-
Your statement will be in a minute's-
Yeah, we'll have your statement, and we can read it, but-
Absolutely.
We've got to move on. Thank you, though, for that.
Of course, thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Yeah. And thanks for the work on your survey. Other comments from the public?
Tyler Morse at 25 Balters Roll Place. So, I too live on the corner of Glen Side and Balters Roll. Fortunately, my house hasn't been hit yet, but it is looming, since two accidents over the past year have already struck her property. We've already had many of you out there to investigate where 18-wheelers are edging the posts and the light fixtures, as well as bumping over the curb, right? So, we have the block curb on both sides, so you can kind of see the damage. What I want to say here is that I support the initiative they're putting forward, but What I want to say here is that I support the initiative they're putting forward, but more importantly, I just ask that we decide what type of community we want to live in. We talked about the sidewalks that connected the arboretum and how lovely that walk is. There are no sidewalks on our side of town. I mean, the closest we have is a nature trail past the hospital. And so, there is some sidewalks, but continuing that effort to connect more of, I believe it's East Summit, I think is a great initiative. I think walkability to and from our schools and for kids that walk at night coming from the high school that I see past my house, it breaks my heart watching them walk in the roads, especially on Glen Side. So, I just say that, you know, although we cannot come to a complete conclusion on how to fix it, but if we could put our minds together, I'm sure we can find something better. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Larry Cohen. I live down the hill in Fanwood, but my ties to summit are pretty deep. I taught here for nine years, retired from the middle school, and I still coach at the middle school and at the high school in the spring. A few years ago, the common council passed an ordinance that prohibited the sale of dogs and cats in pet stores in town. Now, that had nothing to do with trying to dissuade pet stores from opening in town. It had everything to do with trying to disassociate summit with the cruel and barbaric practice whereby puppies are provided to pet stores from really terrible inhumane puppy mills located mostly out in the Midwest. I'm back because some interesting things have happened in the interim. First, this movement has now reached 149 towns within New Jersey, so most of any state in the nation. Second, it's become an interstate issue. Eight states in the country have passed statewide bans on pet stores selling dogs and cats because the evidence that now exists and is so prevalent, linking these puppy mills to pet stores and documenting the cruelty that is involved, is just overwhelming. I mean, you just can't say it doesn't happen anymore. We know it happens. And so, I'm back to ask a follow-up question. This is now a bill in the state legislature. It was proposed by Senator Brian Stack, and it has dozens of cosponsors in both the Senate and the Assembly. What we're asking is the 149 towns in New Jersey that have passed this ordinance locally as well as any other towns that want to, to pass a simple resolution in support of this bill so that the state legislators know that the towns are behind this, having done this already. The sample resolution I gave each of you is from a town up north called Westwood, which, you know, I have to give them credit for this idea because when they passed their ordinance, they on their own did this. They attached the resolution to their ordinance urging the state to pass a bill and ending this really cruel practice in New Jersey. So, I emailed each of you earlier this evening with a digital copy of this, and I really, really hope that you consider passing this and sending it to the state. Thanks so much.
Other comments from the public?
Sorry for my reading glasses. Diego Hood and Argal Court. Last night, most of us had something to celebrate, something to be unhappy about. That's democracy. I congratulate Claire and Michelle, but I do want to thank Don and Mark for their hard work as they sought to serve our community. If you're watching, I know how it feels and it stinks. I hope you remain engaged. Summit needs every voice. This is an odds and ends kind of comment. In the heat of the campaign, Councilman Smallwood asked on Facebook what I would have done differently about the budget. This is probably a better forum in which to answer. I laid out my analysis when I addressed this body three times at budget time. So, here goes. Tax collection was up significantly this year behind record increases to ratables. For this reason, the council majority could have avoided raising or even lowered the tax rate. Additional measures the majority could have taken include releasing 9.6 million of the general fund, leaving the fund with the same 2.1 million balance that was left in 2023. Limit the increase of municipal operating expenses to 3.8% of 2023 actuals. That was the increase that was used throughout the budgeting process. Instead, the 8.2% increase included a whopping 1.1 million or 15% increase in community services and a 24% increase in general government. Lower appropriations could have paid down debt or reduced the tax rate further. Not a bad idea ahead of an election. Indeed, reducing appropriations could have saved an additional 1.5 million. To hire two additional police officers, I would have held off in approving the additional three pensional positions. Our pension liabilities increase proportional to the number of pensional employees, so that's 2.8%. Budget a reasonable 4 to 5 million capex for out years and show a separate schedule for projects that are not on the list. In other words, segregate projects on the budget from those on a wish list. We all know the 11 million budget for 2025 is too high. By doing this, we can avoid the politically expedient non-answer, that's a wish list. Next, explain reductions to the sewer capital budget. Our infrastructure's aging. It would stink if a sewer pipe were to burst. Another one would be to include a $1 million grant for the Canoe River Parkway to reduce the revenue needed or free up funds to pay down debt. And finally, rebalance the community programs' capital budget. We must improve athletic fields, of course, but can, we can't spend 65% of our community programs' capex on just one field. We must take care of playgrounds, provide good facilities within walking access for neighbors around town, for example, East Summit. Oh, and last but not least, eliminate the confusingly-named reserve for uncollected tax. In closing, I'm available to have substantive discussions of this complex matter. So ill-suited for talking in headlines. And Rosie, I'll email you this because I just edited.
Thank you. Other comments? All right, no other comments. We're going to close public comments. And we're going to open it up to our last part of our meeting, which is comments from council. Through you, Council President. Councilman Miniger, lead us out.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cohen, I want to thank you for sending in that proposed resolution. I read the whole thing. I'd liked hearing your explanation of it again today. I fully agree with you on this message and the resolution that, and the message that that resolution sends to the state and its ultimate goals. I have a friend and a colleague who detailed for me a situation at the Woodbridge Mall where they have been protesting frequently, a horrific animal welfare situation happening there. And so, for those, for those kind of situations that are happening all over the state, but also in particular those at Woodbridge, struggling to make their city council hear them on this issue and to help push this over the finish line in the state legislature, this is a no-brainer, and we can and should, should pass this resolution. So, I'm going to push for that. Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Other councilman comments? Councilman Boyer, please.
Sorry, just give me one second here. I want to talk about the park line. All right, so the park line. So, this year, I was the liaison to the park line, and honestly, I didn't hear anything about it until about September. We went down to Russell Place, residents came out, and I didn't realize there was a huge outcry of residents not being heard about issues with the second phase of the park line. I actually went down and one of the residents is here, went to his house. We actually got on the ladder, and I got up there, and I looked around and got a view of what this phase would entail. And during the course of multiple phone calls, listening to residents, talking to our council president and our mayor, we got the steering committee together, and we decided that the steering committee needs to be the avenue to hear the residents' concerns and that this position as a liaison shouldn't be a liaison. This is a city project. There needs to be a chair for the park line committee so that the residents' concerns, the project is driven, and we are on top of this. Now, during these meetings, we address the safety and privacy concerns. There was a concern about privacy. It was a six-foot fence. We got it up to an eight-foot fence, which we believe will provide both privacy and security for residents, but we may adjust the height later if needed. I mean, but it's a, it's a starting point. Parking adjustments, we know that parking is a priority, and the city is prepared to adjust parking rules as needed. There was a letter that went out to the residents in the neighborhood of where this phase would take place, and the letter detailed the next steps of the phase in the project and also the timing as we finalize the specifics. But what I think the big picture here is in 2025, that this steering committee, which may either keep the same folks on it that are, that's on it now in terms of the residents or as we get applications for new residents to be on the steering committee, that that would guide what the residents are telling us needs to happen in this phase of the park line. I think that is what was missing. You know, when we had a conversation, Rick, you know, you told me something that really struck a chord. You said, "Sometimes what people truly need is someone to talk to and listen to them." And when we spoke, we began sharing ideas about what might improve the project, and this conversation became a great example of why I believe in open dialogue and active listening. And to be honest, that this is the type of dialogue that should have happened in the beginning. It became a, "No, I don't want this at all," to, "How can we make it better? We want to improve it. We want it to be successful. I want my house to look nice. I want to wake up in the morning and have coffee, open the gate, and go for a run with lights." I think that is the idea of going into it. And the park line committee, they want it to be beautiful. They want it to look good. The starting point of, "No, this is not going to happen at all. We have to stop." You know, I don't think that gets us anywhere, but what gets us somewhere is how can we make it beautiful? I know we talked about sharing costs. I know for sidewalks, the city used to share costs with the residents on sidewalks. Now, the city pays for the sidewalks. But historically, when someone came up to the city and said, "Hey, I want to share the cost with this. This fits the needs of the entire community." You negotiate with the city and maybe it would happen. I look at it as, you know, buying a home, putting 20% down, right? The bank has an interest in it, and you have an interest in it to take care of it. So, I felt comfortable giving a nod to moving forward with the park line. I'd like to talk about Glen Side Avenue and Ms. Bender that was here, and Ariel, and Tyler. We went down there, we talked about the sidewalks, the congressman came, came out. There is a grant that's pending to put sidewalks there. I think this is, that was a great example of getting the residents in that neighborhood together and saying, "All right, we have a, we have a security concern, excuse me, we have a safety concern, and you want to make it a one-way? You have ideas of what you want to do? All right, well, poll your neighbors, right? Let's get everybody together. I'm going to put you to work, get everybody together." And they went, they went door to door. They went door to door to see what the residents in that area wanted. I mean, that's partnership, right? That's partnership with the city council, that's partnership with the residents. And then we come back and we sit in a safety committee meeting, I talk to the mayor, I talk to the chief Zagorsky, and I say, "Well, what can we do in terms of speeding there?" Right? And, you know, the chief does this thing and says, "Hey, we'll up enforcement." But communication is definitely key. In regards to my report on the Summit Housing Authority, I was at a committee meeting there the other day. We have relentlessly reached out to the Summit Housing Authority to help them with rehabbing, whether it's Glenwood or Weaver Street, but getting them into City Hall so that we can work on improving those areas. And according to the executive director, they were waiting to hire an architect and an engineer to really figure out what it is that they needed to do to have fixed. And I think they are, they are almost there. So, I'm excited to get them into City Hall finally so that we can work on rehabbing and moving forward with that. If that is a possibility, and I pray that it is, these are areas that I'm connected to. And when I ran for office, it was one of the major things that I wanted to be a part of. Last but not least, I want to congratulate Claire Toth and Michelle Kellmanson on their, on their win. I want to also congratulate Don Nelson and Mark Gunderson on a hard-fought race. But more importantly, when I woke up this morning, I thought about Don and Mark's wives because every night when I ran for office and I came home, whether I was upset, whether I was tired, or whether I just needed somebody to tell me I did something right when I did something wrong, my wife was there. She was, she was, she was, she was the backbone. And last night, as I looked at Mark and Don's wives, I just, you know, I, I saw that they had that support, and that is, that is the support that you need. And I was filled with a lot of, a lot of emotion, so wouldn't be able to do it without that partnership. I know I'm talking for a while, but a lot has happened in the last couple of weeks. Yeah, you're shaking your head. Last but not least, congratulations to our new president. Hey, these are the way things go, right? You lose elections, you win elections. And there is nothing new in history. I mean, we had presidents that went out and had duels with each other, shotguns at each other. Yeah, yeah, that happened. Thomas Jefferson, John Adams. We had presidents calling other presidents, you know, French spies. Presidents calling, saying another president got, you know, had an affair with somebody. You know, these things and the rhetoric and stuff, it's 2024, none of this stuff is new. I mean, you know, look at your history. This has been going on for a long time. The world is going to end. This just didn't happen in this election. It happens. Rhetoric and misinformation happens all the time with every election. It's politics, which is why I try not to get upset personally when people come on my Facebook page and write the most ridiculous things, some of the most hurtful things, because at the end of the day, it's politics. It don't even have to be true, right? You just say it. If you say it, it's true. If you say it, it's true. I mean, this is the type of world that we live in. But I will tell you one thing. I love America, and regardless of who the president is, whether it's Joe Biden, Kamala Harris, Donald Trump, they are my president. Doesn't matter. I was in Delaware this summer. Joe Biden was there. I'm a Republican. I don't particularly like the guy. If I saw him on the beach, he's my president. I would give him a hug because I love America. So we all have to be patriots. We all have to love America, deal with the process and balance of power. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone want to follow that? Mr., Councilman Smallwood?
On a, on a latter note, first of all, I'd like to thank Rosie for always giving us some chocolates, which, which reminded me to thank Mark Azroski and David Guida on a great job on our Halloween parade and the Halloween event on the Village Green. It's always one of the most fun events because I, I tried to dress up like, you know, one of the founding fathers, but I couldn't find a costume in time, at least that fit, so I ended up dressing up as my son in his lacrosse uniform, and I got to pretend to be a lacrosse player for a day. So thank you for the Department of Community Programs putting on a great event, and we have another event coming up on Monday, Veterans Day, so would encourage everyone to come out and honor our veterans on Monday.
Thank you. Other comments?
I do, but Greg and I are having that standoff we always have.
Boys.
Come on, someone jump in.
All right. I want to thank Rosie for running the election. She did a superb job as usual. I also want to congratulate Michelle and Claire for winning, and congratulate Don and Mark as well. All four of you ran spirited and positive campaigns, and compared to how the national race has panned out here in Summit, pretty competitive. You know, the candidates here in Summit all pushed each other to do better for Summit, and I know we'll all benefit from that in the long run, so thank you all.
Other comments from council? I'll just wrap it up real quick. I'd also like to thank Rosie for running the election. There's been obviously a lot of talk in the press over the last eight years about election integrity. It matters. We have someone right here who is right at the forefront of, of doing that, along with a lot of community volunteers who work in all the polling stations. I always make it a point when you see those people to thank them for doing that. They don't get really paid much. They're there at the crack of dawn, and they stay late. So it is something that the community does, and you want to have an election that everyone can trust, so I thank all of them. Last thing I would just say, I, I really liked Mr. Morse's comment about the community we want to live in, and just as that, on that park line thing, Councilman Boyer spoke to the steering committee, and I'm excited that that will be a vehicle that will put more of a process in place to roll out the following phases, and excited when those following phases get rolled out because the vision of that park line, it's, it is a wonderful place to be, but he mentioned it. It's a connector. It connects our community, and that's what's super, super important, that you can get from one place to the other safely in places that haven't been serviced all that well in the past. So that's what I'm super excited about. I can't wait to see the next phases. I'm confident with community engagement. It's going to be beautiful, and people will be super, super happy about it. So that's it. Oh, again. Councilman Palowski?
Well, I forgot something I wanted to say about the park line, which is, I spoke to former Councilman Rubino, and he said that they have budgeted money for gates so that if you're a resident who lives on the park line and you wanted to have private access to it, they're going to be able to do that.
Yeah, I know on the, the section that's open, almost every budding residency has, has a little access spot, and they use it.
I think it's going to be fenced.
No, no, I, I know on the next phase, they will, but so I, I do think residents do find it nice to have that type of access, and, and that's what's great about it. Okay. All right, if there are no other comments?
I just got to say something on that note. I'm so sorry. Because you're talking about the park line, and I don't want to get a bunch of phone calls tonight, all right? So, but that's what the steering committee is, is for, right? So that the residents can talk to each other, can talk directly to the board members and have a council person there and to say what they like on their property, what they don't like, their, you know, I, I'm excited that that is going to happen. So, so it's not, it's not doomsday, you know, on a Friday afternoon, and we're talking about going to another phase. All of this, all of these things will be worked out prior to that, and, and that's what I'm, I'm really excited about.
They could make a motion to adjourn?
I was waiting for that. All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Good evening, everyone.